I think we're ready to go. Patrick? Are we live? Can I start? Okay. Okay. Welcome. Okay. Whoa! Okay. That was a good hint. Okay. Welcome. Welcome, everybody, to the reorganization meeting of the Town of Rye and the inauguration of newly elected town officials. I'd like to start with the pledge, and I'd like to ask County Executive Latimer, State Senator Shelley Mayer, and Steve Otis, our Assemblyman, to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you, friends. Thank you, fellow elected officials, George, Shelley, Steve, Deputy County Executive Ken Jenkins. Am I missing someone? I know that Council... I was just gonna say, County Legislature Nancy Barr is away, and Debbie Friedman, her assistant, and much more than that, is here representing her. So with that, our first order of business is the inauguration of newly elected officials, and the County Executive will do the honors. I think, Randy? Let's do you first.
One at a time.
One at a time.
Randy, if you'll come over here. You're gonna... It's your call.
I'm a big fan of the Bible. Best seller.
You're gonna hold it for him? Usually, somebody holds it for him, and then the individual, unless you have someone here that you'd like to hold the Bible for you.
My wife questioned my sanity in doing this.
You do realize we're on live TV. Okay.
I swear my wife's not watching.
Let me go from here on in, okay? We're gonna administer the oath of office to each of the council members, and then to Supervisor Zuckerman. The oath has been identified and confirmed by Town Clerk Hope Vespia, so as I recite this, please repeat after me. Okay, please raise your right hand, if you would, if you have your hand on the Bible. I state your name.
I, Randy Selyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Town Councilmember.
Of the office of Town Councilmember.
Of the Town Board of the Town of Rye.
Of the Town Board of the Town of Rye.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank you for breaking that off as a memorable trumps.
I know, right?
Having been on the other side of an inauguration. Now, to make it official, Randy, you'll have to sign this, and I witnessed it as well. We'll do that, I guess, at the end.
Okay.
Right? Okay. Very good. Thank you. The next one, Pamela Jaffe.
Here you go.
He holds it, you put your hand on it. Thank you. Okay, folks? I state your name.
I, Pamela Jaffe.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Town of Rye Councilperson.
Of the Office of Town of Rye Councilperson.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Each of these oaths are a little different, and you can swear, or affirm, or be silent, and I'm reading what they had here, so I thought maybe that was how you handled it already. She knows her people. And now we'll do the Town Supervisor. I just want to say editorially, I'm joined, as you've already announced, by Ken Jenkins, the Deputy County Executive, other members of elective office, Steve Otis and Shelley Mayer. And I think it's important to understand that a ceremony like this is one of the most important traditional things that we do. This is Jeffersonian democracy. I think this is what the founding fathers intended. They intended for us to, as individuals, to step up, to serve in public office, and to make a commitment in front of all of our fellow residents that we swear that we will do the best job that we can and will follow the laws and the Constitution that have been established for democracy. So Gary, congratulations on your victory, and please raise your right hand. And repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Gary Zuckerman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Town of Rye Supervisor.
Of the Office of Town of Rye Supervisor.
Of the Town of Rye.
The Town of Rye.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Supervisor.
Pam? Randy, do you want to say anything? I have a couple of remarks myself. I just want to thank everybody for coming again, and I especially want to thank my fellow elected officials. I think we have a very unique arrangement within this part of the county of Westchester. And I think, George, you have set the tone from the very beginning, when you took office, of all levels of government working together. The local governments, our state, pardon me, our towns and villages, with the county of Westchester, you and our county legislators, and of course Shelley and Steve on the state level, to accomplish good things for all the people. And I think that this is how government should be working, together for a common cause, making the lives of everybody in the town better. And again, I want to thank everybody for coming, for coming, all our friends, supporters, some of you I have known for a very long time. And I want to thank you. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. And we're gonna continue on the course with hopefully some even beneficial modifications to make things even better than they have been. So thank you very much.
Council members who have recently sworn in, would like to say a few words, this is the moment to do it. Randy?
We spent an all-election night.
And now, we're going to have our reorganization meeting. Everybody's welcome to stay. It should take, oh, maybe ten or twelve minutes. We have three resolutions, and then we're going to adjourn. And we will meet again in February. This will be our January meeting. So thank you. And, yes. There's a lot here to eat and some to drink. Feel free to do it, even as we go on. So thank you. Feel free.
How we get this chair to go up?
Sit in it.
Sit in it.
This one.
I didn't realize about this.
Hope?
Hey, Nardi. They changed, I didn't do it, I didn't do it. I think you're right. If you were Nardi's sitting next to you. I'd say, please be deputy, right?
What?
Please be deputy. In case you.
He sits there.
Somebody's, no, that's Hope.
Hope.
This is your. Yeah, I, somebody, I think Debbie changed. Who's this? Is that for you? Is that yours?
No.
I don't know. That's Jill's?
I don't know.
Might be Jill's.
Jill. Tom.
Millennium resolution. I got a call from Dave Jenkins while I was sitting with Randy that they only want to guarantee the price until the end of 2029. Do you want to just pass it?
Pass it. No.
Skip it.
Skip it.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
I said, Dave, you've realized you're calling me. Quarter of six. Look, my name's John. You can't sit behind him, because that's your phone.
Jill, is this your phone? All right. Let me, hold it. Guys, let me make an announcement to the board. After this meeting, we're changing around. We cannot have the three guys on one side and the two women on the other. We have to. You do?
Yeah.
Okay, I won't fight it. By the way, where did Elaine go? Where did Elaine go? Did you see where? Oh, okay. All right. We're ready to do the agenda for our reorganization meeting. We already done the pledge of allegiance and our swearing-in of the newly elected officials. Hope, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
Councilperson Jill Axelrod.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas Nardi.
Here.
Councilperson Randy Selyer.
Present.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
I am definitely here. Thank you. Welcome, Randy.
Thank you.
Our first order of business, adoption of the minutes for December 5th, 2023. If there are no additions or corrections, behalf of motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our first item are the reorganization resolutions.
Here's another, excuse me, the meeting held on December 14th, the minutes.
Oh, I skipped over that one. Sorry. Meeting held December 14th, 2023. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
If there are no additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Reorganization resolutions. There are several. I'm going to summarize all of them. If, we will have one vote at the end. If there are any questions on any of the resolutions, just say, "Stop," or "I have a question."
Point of order, does that include the guests?
No. Resolution A, the Journal News and Westmore Newsbead are designated the official newspapers of the Town of Rye. B, the Town of Rye adopts the Local Government Management Guide for Travel and Conference Expense Management. Resolution C, that personnel shall be required to keep a mileage log of each such trip made, which will be reviewed by the supervisor or the designated town administrator before payment is approved, and that's compensation rate is .67 cents per mile, as per the Internal Revenue Code. Resolution D, that the third Thursday of every month is designated as a regular meeting night of the Town Board, and the meeting is to commence at 6:00 P.M. Resolution E, appointing Deborah Reisner as the Director of Purchasing, and that comes without additional compensation. Resolution F, Jeff Binder is hereby reappointed as a Town Attorney for a two-year term. His compensation is listed and is payable in equal biweekly installments. Resolution G, Dan Tartalia and Jeff Binder are designated as Special Counsel in Tax Searor Matters and for other litigation matters as approved by the Town Council, and that is a rate of $280 per hour, subject to further modification by the resolution of the Town Council. Resolution H, Vince Toomey is retained as Labor Attorney at a rate of $300 per hour per partner, $210 per hour for Associate Attorneys, and $140 per hour for Law Clerks and Paralegals. Jeff Binder is appointed as the Records Appeal Officer of the Town of Rye. That position is in case somebody challenges the non-issuance of a foil. Resolution J is Dave Burns is reappointed as the Town Controller. Resolution K, Hope Vespia is reappointed as a Register of Vital Statistics of the Town of Rye. And Hope Vespia is designated as Records Management Officer for the Town of Rye. We have several positions of Marriage Officer. It's a very important position. And those people designated as Marriage Officers are Clerk Hope Vespia, Town Administrator Deborah Reisner, Town Supervisor Gary Zuckerman, Deputy Town Clerks Paula Ponce and Stephanie Masial. Resolution N, Brandy Beltis is appointed as the Town Prosecutor. And her stipend is $12,875 annually. Resolution O, Michael O'Connor is appointed as Bailiff at a compensation of $3,000 per year. Resolution P, we have several persons who are appointed as civil officers, sometimes known as constables. These people generally serve papers on behalf of the Town of Rye, and they are Alan Carroll, Dean DeLeo, Scott Sprague, Ernie Tagani, Dan Conway, Peter Cilio, Michael Cancel, and Jean Branca. And further resolved that Ernie Tagani will serve as Director of Civil Officers for two years with no compensation. Resolution O, resolve that Lindsey Ann Jackson is reappointed as a Member of the Rye Town Park Commission for a two-year term, commencing today and expiring in two years, December 31, 2025. For those who are not aware, both the Town of Rye and the City of Rye have one additional appointment in addition to the Chief Executive Officers of the City and Villages and Town, and the person by statute appointed for the Town of Rye must reside in Rynec. The town of, Resolution R, the Town of Rye establishes a work hour, a work week of three hours a day, five days a week, as a standard work schedule for the Town Council Members. Resolution S, three, the same thing, a work schedule of three hours a day, five days a week, as standard work schedule for the Town Attorney and Town Controller. Resolution T, the Town of Rye procurement policy for 2024 shall be adopted with no changes from the previous policy of 2023. Are there any questions? If not, may I have a motion and a second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hope, please call the roll.
Councilperson Jaffe?
Yes.
Councilperson Axelrod?
Yes.
Councilperson Nardi?
Yes.
Councilperson Selyer?
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. And the next resolution is to cancel the regular monthly meeting, now scheduled for January 18th. This meeting will be the monthly meeting. If there is a need to call an additional meeting, I will call a special meeting, as it may be determined as needed. So, motion to cancel the meeting of January 18th, 2024?
So moved. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The last resolution is gonna be stricken from the agenda and will reappear at our next meeting. And before we adjourn, I heard some noise from the audience. Are there any audience members that wish to speak at the meeting?
Rick Bues in Six Mark Drive, Rye, Brock. I found it interesting, the comments by the County Executive about... I found it interesting, the comments by the county executive about democracy. I was disappointed, it was not noise. I just respectfully asked for a point of order as to whether or not we could question any of the resolutions. I'm used to a little more transparency, allowing people to ask questions. Uh, I want to tell you my story. My story is, three weeks ago, I planned to come to the first meeting of the budget. I have three grandchildren who live nearby. Obviously, things happened, I couldn't make it. But I couldn't stream the meeting. I could have gone on Facebook, but I couldn't be heard. I would just, you know, I could write a question. Doesn't seem all that transparent. A week later, similar situation, night of the, of the, uh, oh, I'm sorry. I also went to the website, looked, looked for the proposed budget, was unable to find it. Now, I will be the first one to admit that I am not a tech wizard. But I kind of get how government works, I've been there. I couldn't find the proposed budget. The following week, I wanted to come meeting, same problem. Yes, I could have gotten a link, but, you know, watching is not participating. And I would say the town of Rye, just like the village of Rye Brook and the village of Porchester and all the school districts are participatory governments, couldn't participate. The budget was passed. The following Monday, I checked the website, couldn't find the budget. A past budget. Very frustrating. Because I had been hearing from other residents about issues that they felt they would like to be involved with. And they asked me whether or not there were certain things that I might be willing to do, because I'm willing to take a shot at anything, that's not an issue. Some of them included some of the things that were included in the res- resolution this evening. But I was not allowed to ask a question about something that had to do with resolutions. To me, it's very disappointing. It's disappointing because the town tends to purport itself as being open government. But you can't stream a meeting. And as most of you know, having been on a school board that dealt with busting the tax cap and having many people wanting to get involved, to speak. We were open, we streamed our meetings, we let people at home bring their questions in. I, I, it's, it's hard for me to believe that we're being as transparent in the town of Rye as we are in other areas. At the same time, I hear complaints that nobody comes to any of the town of Rye meetings. Well, you know, my feeling is, if you make it a little bit more resident-friendly, people will come. But I'm not sure you're being as friendly to the residents as you could be. I have a ton of questions. Tonight's not the night. I congratulate all the elected officials. But going forward, I would hope that maybe some of the policies and the way that you run your meetings would be a little more transparent for people. And for them to get, to express their opinions much more often and in a situation where they may not feel somewhat intimidated. I don't know. You know, maybe it's me, I'm not intimidated. But, uh, again, going forward, I'm hoping in that sense of democracy and as the supervisor said, trying to make things better. Let's make it so that we don't need keys to unlock what's going on in the town of Rye. Thank you.
Before you step down, can I, do you mind if I ask you what specifically would you suggest to make it better?
Because I'm uncertain. Look, there may be technical issues with streaming these live where somebody could just go online and it shows up. Facebook doesn't, I, I, I don't know of any other municipality that does Facebook for their meetings. And again, you can't, there's no interacting. It's, yes, you can, it specifically says, you can enter the comments or questions on the end, which may or may not be answered. You know, I'm not a good typist, so.
Let me, let me, let me say, first of all, your, your, um, statement about speaking on the resolution, I have no idea what you were going to speak about, but all the, all the numbers that were in the resolutions passed tonight were in the budget. If you have a problem with the budget, I'll personally apologize. Because that budget should have been online and accessible, that's our policy. I don't know why it wasn't online before, or that, or that you couldn't find, I don't know why you couldn't find it. I mean, I can ask Debbie as to why it might not have been. The budget, the preliminary budget, as far as I'm concerned, was online. We had two budget hearings, not one, but two budget hearings before we passed the budget. And anybody could have come to this meeting or streamed it or come online to ask questions. That's what the public hearing is for. So I don't know why there was a technical glitch. But the policy of this council is to be open and transparent with all matters. And normally, when we have resolutions on the agenda, members who wish to question that particular resolution are welcome to speak. And they're welcome to speak, as I, I knew that you wanted to speak, that's why I called you up. I had no idea what you were going to talk about, but everybody's welcome to come here and speak. We love it. In fact, Tommy hates the fact that we're on, he wants, he wants to cut us off from all of it because he wants people to come to the meetings, which is fine with me. People can come here.
But then maybe, as long as we're asking questions, then maybe, why does it have to go through a gatekeeper to, to do this? I mean, it says in the paper, you either have to call Debbie or you have to call Hope to get the link. That's not, that's not democratic. That's a gatekeeper, and, and I love them both, it's, it has, it's nothing personal, it just doesn't make sense to me.
To get a Zoom link, part of the problem, and we'll have to review it. Like I said, like I said, Rick, Rick, like I said, we, we intend to be open with all of these things. If it's not, it's not by intent, it's by happenstance. You're the first one that has complained about this, we will look into it. But one of the problems with the Zoom is, if you'll remember doing COVID, when people had Zoom meetings, there's a lot of Zoom bombing. People coming into the meetings and saying all kinds of stuff that is not part of the meeting. So we have, I don't know that we have a way to control that. You know, I don't know that we have a way to stop, for example, Nazi propaganda from coming into our meetings or, or, or other stuff that might come in, threats to people. We don't know, I, I'm not sure how we stop that. That's why we have a, a link where we control who's in. But I don't know that anybody has been turned away if they've asked for a link to come into the meeting. We have people Zooming in all the time, we have presentations on Zoom. So, you know, our policy is to be as open as possible. And if there's a glitch in it, we'll try to fix it.
I, I understand, I, I still, the, the gatekeeper part of it bothers me. Only because I've been in other governments where I sat on your side, where we never had, you know, whoever wanted to come, whoever was on, wanted to be on Zoom, they, you know. And, and frankly, I don't want to bother two hard-working members of your staff to get a link. I mean, you know, it, it, it takes time. I mean.
Just like any Zoom meeting, or the, the links always change, the passwords always change. I personally have a problem with it. I feel, everybody knows, when we have our meeting, I feel people should show up. Because I think that's the best way of getting your point across than worrying about getting, uh, internet or some kind of link or whatever. You know, it's the third Thursday, 6 o'clock, show up. I've said it so many times, we've had, when we had discussions, how many you have on, well, for instance, when we did the, um, the, the, uh, cafe, and I was the deciding vote. And I asked Debbie, how many people are on Zoom? She said nine. I said, how many are workers on nine? Not one person from the public was on that. You know, we have on the website, we have our link on the website that's broadcast, but I don't know.
That's the Facebook, and again, that's not interactive.
This is the reason why I always say, come to the meetings instead, you know, plan, if you're going to sit home, my thing is, if you're going to sit home on the computer, you should be able to come here. That's just me.
And, and that's fair. You may want to also revisit the 6 o'clock start time. Because let's be honest, I, I don't know of, again, any of our local committee, uh, communities that have 6 o'clock meetings. Because people work, people come from the city. And they're, they're on the train at 6 o'clock, and if they do want to say something, they're not going to get here, Tom. I mean, we, we know that.
All of this can be, all of this can be reviewed, those.
And that's fine, and that's why, that's why I'm bringing it up.
But one of the reasons for the 6 o'clock start time is that in years past, I'd say going back, uh, maybe two years before, we used to have the town meeting and the Rye Town Park meeting on the same night. And in order to not go to 1 o'clock, we started at 6 o'clock. So we had, uh, generally the park meeting, and there were some contentious meetings. We had the town meeting start at 8 o'clock. People who wanted to come to the town meeting, including the council people, when the park meeting went till 8:30 and 9 o'clock, for, when we had an 8 o'clock meeting, did not work. So we separated them to two days, Tuesday and Thursday, and we kept them both at 6 o'clock. It can be revisited.
I, I think that, I think that would help, I think that would help with your turnout. Maybe instead of three, it'll be five. But, you know, but the, but the bottom line is, I think that, that's an issue, it's not an issue, obviously, for me, but.
Thank you for your comments, I think.
Thank you.
I think that, you know, all of this can be reviewed. You know, the policy is, is transparency, we've said it. And if it's not working as we intend for it to work, then we'll, we'll review it and see if we can make it work better.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Happy New Year.
If there's nothing else, our up, next meeting is February 15th, and may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.